Extra time on your hands.
Well, no, this is one of, this was, uh, this was Saturday night after getting home from Cranston at two thirty when I couldn't sleep. Channels.
All right.
Is it on DCTV?
Yeah, um.
Yeah. What did, we ended up doing?
I have to go, I have to go on demand because I don't have cable. Yeah. On channel, channel nine.
Okay. Good luck, Mary. I just noticed you with the gavel.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, section thirty A, section twenty, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via live stream at www.youtube.com/DartmouthCommunityMedia. Excuse me. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast on DCTV channels nine and eighteen on the following days. Wednesday and Thursday at five PM, Friday at six AM, Saturday at eight AM, and Sunday at two PM. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practicable. Unfortunately, Dr. Jenkins is ill and cannot be with us tonight, so I will be stepping into her role. We wish Dr. Jenkins well and hope she gets better quickly. Okay. Ms. Genther, can we have a roll call, please?
Shannon Jenkins, Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
John Nunes.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Okay, all right.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Public comments are welcome during the public comments segment. Please forward all comments to the recording secretary at Kathleen Genther at DartmouthSchools.org. All of your emails are received and read by all the members of the school committee. Ms. Genther, do we have any public comments at this time?
We do not.
Okay, thank you, and we'll circle back at the end. Thank you. Okay, um, next, first item on our agenda is the approval of our regular session minutes of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Could I please entertain a motion to approve these minutes?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on this matter? Okay. As we don't have any discussion, could we please?
All in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Opposed.
Opposed? Extentions? Right, all right. Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our report from our student representative, Mr. Josh Moniz. Josh, it's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too. Thank you, Ms. Waite. Good evening, everyone. I am Josh Moniz, and I'm a senior at Dartmouth High School. I'd like to give you a report on what's going on at Dartmouth High. There was a post-secondary fair held on October fifth, which featured more than sixty colleges and universities, as well as every branch of the armed services for grade twelve and eleven students. It was a great opportunity to learn more about various colleges and also connect with admissions and recruiters. There was a club and activities expo hosted during all three lunches on October seventh, which displayed the various clubs and activities available for students to join at DHS. On October thirteenth, PSAT slash NMS, excuse me, NMSQT exams were administered at DHS to all grade ten and eleven students as practice for SATs, as well as to provide grade twelve, eleven students an opportunity to qualify for a national scholarship. Our unified basketball team hosted the unified basketball team from Derby High School last week in a narrow home game loss. Our student government hosted grade nine elections this past week. Candidates delivered their speeches during the pace period prior to electronic voting taking place. Our volleyball team hosted their annual Dig Pink volleyball game this past Friday, raising five hundred and seventy-four dollars, which will be donated to Meta Aviva. Not sure if I'm saying that right. I apologize if I'm missing that off. Which is, this is a nonprofit organization dedicated to increasing awareness of advanced breast cancer and equity research and patient support. Our band is off to a great start this season, with all first-place finishes already this fall, including this past weekend with scores of ninety-four point one and ninety-three point seven. We also have another home show coming up this weekend at Dartmouth Memorial Stadium. We are scheduled to perform at approximately seven twenty-five PM. You don't want to miss us. I promise you, you won't be disappointed. It's a great show this year. Class officers and advisors have been meeting with members of the administrative team to plan an outdoor homecoming dance, which is currently scheduled for Saturday, November thirteenth. More details are anticipated by the end of the week. DHS students are ecstatic at this opportunity and return to some normalcy. That concludes my update at Dartmouth High School. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments?
No, thank you very much.
All right.
Very much, Josh.
Yes, and again, congratulations in this past weekend. I know you guys must be exhausted, and we're really excited for the home show. I'm sure there'll be many more roses than thorns, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you, and, you know, while we'd love to have you stay, I'm sure, you know, you have quite a bit to do, so feel free to take off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Potter PTO, their fundraising request. I'd like to request a motion to approve this fundraising request.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Amaral. Do I have any discussion?
I'll just say that this is, uh, looks pretty ambitious. I wish Potter School PTO the best of luck. We certainly could use some money after the year we had last year, so as always, just give my regards to the PTO president and all of them.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Okay.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Okay.
Motion passed.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, at this point, we will have our presentations on the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two school improvement plan from our elementary schools, Quinn, DeMello, Potter, and the Cushman schools.
Okay, um, Dr. Gifford?
Oh, sorry. I'm looking for all kinds of things. So obviously, we have our entire group here, and I, I'm not sure who's starting off tonight. Um...
I'll introduce them.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you all, since there are so many, as you do your report on your school and what section that you're going to be reporting on, you can introduce the staff that is here. As a reminder, to continue, we are continuing along the theme and the three priority areas, and I know they're going to speak about that, that we focused on with the middle and high school this year. And I know they, all of the elementary schools worked hard together to maintain consistency across the district. Although they're all unique, each school has always have some, bring some uniqueness to the table. They wanted to, we all want to continue to maintain that consistency. So again, are you starting?
I'm starting.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share our school improvement plans with you tonight. As we are the third cohort to present, we know you're well-versed in the state's acceleration roadmap. And as such, we are going to advance beyond the explanatory slides and get right into the presentation of the individual schools' action steps. So I will defer to Dr. Dale to get us started.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So looking at the first caveat, which was sense of belonging and partnership among students and families, it's more important now than ever, as we live through this pandemic, to do so. So I'd like to add the word "staff" to this as well, because I think there's been a number of new staff hired, and being hired during time of the pandemic is not a usual kind of thing. So I'd like to add "staff" into that sense of belonging and partnership. And at Cushman, we are going to partner to create a family communication plan with calendar updates that's two-way, culturally responsive, and provided in a variety of languages.
Good evening, and I'll just, um, the DeMello action step is to consider the multifaceted identities of our students and the need to provide windows, mirrors, and doors. And those are phrases that you've heard us use before, as we have students be able to see themselves reflected, access new experiences, and see into the lives of others. And so this comes right out of the acceleration roadmap, but it's something that resonated with us in a very authentic way, as it really dovetails directly with the work that we've been doing over the last two years at DeMello. We've laid the groundwork by establishing our diversity library, but also taking a hard look at our classroom libraries and our mentor texts through that lens of mirrors, windows, and doors. One thing that COVID did cut short for us was the family night that was in the works that included an event where a photographer was come to take, or was scheduled to come and take pictures of our diverse families to grace the hallways through our school. Our ultimate goal is to create a series of celebration-of-self events where students are working towards exploring, sharing, and celebrating their own uniqueness and individuality.
So at Potter, we wanted to focus on our culture in terms of a sense of belonging. And by doing that, we decided to refine our P to the Three Plan, which is Potter's positive plan, including both our Tier One and Tier Two protocols. We are reviewing that with all staff. That includes teachers, specialists, TAs, and even our recess lunch monitors. We did that through PLCs and staff meetings. And during the month of September, we focused on explicit teaching and reteaching of school-wide expectations following our pause-to-be-kind, pause-to-be-safe, and pause-to-be-a-learner expectations. We began the year, well, excuse me, we ended the month of September with an assembly kicking off our P to the Three school-wide plan, and we even had a DJ help us celebrate outside. But the incentive part is critical, because it's the recognition part of PBIS. So every morning, we recognize a student or two who has received a Catch Me at My Best slip for following the expectations. All the slips are displayed on a Catch Me at My Best bulletin board, and we randomly take down one or two every day. We have set up prize boxes outside the office, and through very kind donations, children who have been selected get to come down and get to pick a prize from the box. And we hear from staff that children are very eager to earn Catch Me at My Best slips, because they eagerly await every morning to find out if their name will be called. We've also conversely done this in the afternoon with Mrs. McHenry's afternoon announcements, as we are specifically honing in in areas like the playground and the hallway, because for many of our students, it's been since, um, a long time since they've had a little more free rein in certain parts of the building, because last year was so structured.
I might be taking some of those ideas, so I am also talking about Quinn's PBIS and really restructuring it for next school year, which takes a lot of time. So we're going to continue with our PBIS program this school year. Like Rick said, the last twenty months or so, students haven't been really explicitly taught those expectations, so really making sure that they know what those expectations are at recess and on the school bus and in the hallways and the classroom. But really making sure that we're also looking at next year. And so we're going to continue with our PBIS this year, but then behind the scenes, really focus with staff and students and families for next year. We really want the students to have, be a part of the decision-making process, which we think is really fun and exciting for them, to be able to maybe vote on certain things, and also for our families as well, through our PTO page and our school council. So really making sure that we have all of our stakeholders involved for next year. So we're really excited to see what our PBIS looks like. And now we're going to turn it over to Cushman back for monitoring understanding.
Okay, under monitoring for understanding, at Cushman, we are going to ensure that all teachers have access to the beginning-of-the-year diagnostics and clear instructions for scheduling these diagnostics after relationship building has taken place. As Cushman has the youngest learners beginning at age three, relationship building with our students and families is critical prior to getting into any kind of diagnostic data. So we want to make sure that the information from early intervention gets to the teacher to provide the backstory to our own testing that's done for our special needs students. And then for all preschool and kindergarten students, it's imperative that we gather as much information as we can from our families, as they're the students', you know, first teachers. It's important that our children feel comfortable and safe at school prior to beginning, beginning that deeper dive into their learning profiles.
Moving on to DeMello School, our action step is to ensure that our data meeting set norms that focus on data-driven decision-making. And this is yet another action step from the acceleration roadmap that speaks to us at DeMello School. If you ask the staff of DeMello School, they'll tell you that there's nothing more than Katie Paveo and Liz Coria liked than a good spreadsheet. And we're continuing to work with our staff at really diving deeply into that data this year and using it to inform our instructional practices and supports.
And at Potter, we have been talking throughout the summer about that concern to better align our Tier One and Tier Two instruction, especially when we are really trying to focus on accelerating the learning. So for this year, which is new, we've identified one PLC time every four to six weeks for our reading and math interventionists to attend with the grade-level teachers to discuss students they share and their progress. It's also going to be time to analyze student data and create cohesive plans of instruction and support. This careful analysis of both the formal data and the informal data will help to support fluid intervention groups. The planning structure will also help our RTI process as we continue to align both our Tier One and Tier Two practices. And this isn't just limited to the academic areas. Our social-emotional team, made up of the admin, the social workers, the nurse, and the school psychologist, we meet once a week to share behavior data, so that we can identify the students who might need Tier Two supports. But more importantly, to adjust our Tier One practices when need be, because we, research shows that eighty-five percent of our students should be responding to Tier One supports.
And lastly, at Quinn, our focus, similar to Potter, will be to really beef up our response to intervention. We really, we take this process and we meet throughout the year consistently. We do our best to identify students who potentially display gaps in their learning. This whole team is made up of, it's admin, interventionists, school psychologists, outreach workers, teachers, special education teachers. It really depends on what the students need at the time of the RTI, of who we invite to the meeting. And the focus of that meeting is to review the data, but really get to know the child based on how the teachers see them, where they believe the gaps may be, or the rationale behind them, and put in place supports that not only support the students, but they support the teachers so that they have what they need in the classroom. So collectively, that team then puts, we like to call it a mini-action plan in place that, for the students who are struggling, and then we will revisit them in the next eight to ten weeks as the RTI moves throughout the year. So we will continue with that process at Quinn.
Hey. Great-appropriate instruction is our third caveat, and at Cushman, we will establish an instructional strategy focus for the year and align observation, coaching, evaluation, and professional learning priorities to this focus. All pre-K and kindergarten teachers and special needs teachers at Cushman have established an evaluation focus for themselves, student learning goals and professional practice goals about implementing the new Bridges Math Program into our teaching of mathematics. Throughout the year, we'll be working closely with the district-level personnel for PD, building-level staff during our common planning, and classroom-level lesson planning, along with our math coach, administration, and others around the delivery of the new program, while we reflect and then consider any extensions and/or scaffolds that we might need as we go along. Having a school-wide focus on the program, along with appropriate differentiation and those just-in-time scaffolds we've been hearing about, will ensure that all students are being provided great-appropriate instruction.
And at the DeMello School, we're looking at conducting cycles of observation and feedback that are focused on access to grade-level work and cognitive engagement, very similar to kind of what Dr. Dale was just talking about. But I think I speak for all administrators when I say that the highlight of our days are those times that we get to spend in classrooms watching teaching and learning happen. We want to be sure that we're using that time, that time in classrooms to provide timely, targeted, and effective feedback to our teachers that promotes the acceleration of learning for all students. And even as our days are often dominated by COVID and all that that encompasses, this action step highlights the importance of being in classrooms consistently and keeping the dialogue about accelerated learning really at the forefront.
Good evening, and for Potter, under great-appropriate instruction, our work this year centers on maximizing the impact of Tier One instruction, while also supporting consistent Tier Two and Tier Three supports. So to that end, we started with taking a look at the schedule. So this summer, Mr. Porter and I worked together to create grade level, a grade-level schedule structure that enables time, chunks of time, for uninterrupted ELA and math Tier One instruction. So what do I mean by that? So say I'm a fourth-grade student. I'm not coming in at nine oh five, having maybe fifteen minutes of math. Then I have to go over, off to, say, music. Then I come back for another fifteen minutes of math, and oh no, it's time for recess now. So I get my last twenty minutes of math after that. So we really focused on maximizing that amount of time and having it uninterrupted. In addition to that, prior to the start of school, we also had grade-level teacher representatives collaborate together to identify times of the day that would best support intervention blocks in the areas of ELA and math without sacrificing any Tier One instruction. So we identified what we're calling WIN blocks, which stands for what I need blocks. So at that time, all students in either ELA or math get exactly what they need. So for some students, that may mean that they're heading off to see the reading and math interventionists. For others, it could be that they're staying in the classroom and they're getting more practice on a newly-acquired skill. Or it could also mean for others that they're getting some enrichment activities to participate in. So that WIN block is important to our daily schedule. As with any planning structure at Potter, our schedules need to be fluid and flexible to adapt to the ever-changing needs of our students in our classrooms. So we recognize that this may need to change throughout the school year.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to present for great-appropriate instruction for the Quinn School. And in an effort to ensure we reach all students and ensuring that our Tier One instruction is most impactful, teachers have the autonomy, based on daily informal assessments, to adjust their instruction to add pre-teaching or reteaching opportunities as needed. And what that really means is we've spent so much time, I think all the schools have over the previous years, of talking about RTI and data collection and the Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. But with the acceleration roadmap this year, a huge point of emphasis is truly honing in on that Tier One instruction and kind of dip-sticking your entire class. So if you have twenty students, by giving a quick informal assessment or any type of assessment, really gauging and making sure that the lesson that you're providing is targeting the large majority of students, so you're really honing in on that Tier Two, Tier Three on a daily basis for a smaller population. And by doing that, that tweaks slightly based on that informal assessment if you need to do an extra reteaching lesson or reteaching lesson, which does impact the curriculum map. But that's the importance of staying with the grade-level curriculum and making sure that all students' needs are being met on a daily basis, which I think is a huge relief for staff to know that they have that autonomy on a daily basis, to concentrate on that, while all the other supports and teams that have been established over time will focus in on the Tier Two and Tier Three component. And I think that is all the slides.
Yes. Well, thank you very much. Would any of my colleagues like to comment? Mr. Oliver?
Sure, I guess I'll start. First of all, thank you, everyone, for your presentations. It's always extremely helpful to not only see your faces, but also see what's going on and what's happening in your particular schools every year. I guess I'll start with PBIS. So I know that many students, they haven't been in the district for, you know, eighteen months, right? Or close to that. How are you in, I know, I believe it was Mr. Porter and another district that brought up PBIS. Are you finding that you're having students that are in the building that are, there's no, I guess, there's no routines really that are built because they've been out for so long? So it's almost as if they're just starting school again. Are we seeing that a lot in the, in the schools? I have everyone, I don't know if that was, the camera was on them, but everyone's shaking their head yes. So, and, so I think it's great, and I know PBIS is nothing new to the district. It's something we've been doing for a long time. So, you know, I'm happy to see that we're focusing on that. In addition, as you're reviewing the beginning-of-the-year data, your September first data, are you finding abnormally-high skills gaps that you, that are not consistent with like a typical year? How are you find, how are you finding the data that, because I have no doubt that everyone has benchmarked their students already. How are you finding that data for the beginning of the year? And anyone can answer.
I don't mind starting that. Not that untyp, it's very similar to most school years. I'll say that there's the gaps that you kind of expect, there's the regression. But those students are making quick gains. And as far as going back to the social-emotional piece, I think students are very happy to be back full student body and on a daily basis. So it's more of that excitement, I think, of everyone being back in the school that we're getting through now that the first month is over and back into routines, and we're having our first PBIS rally next week. So it's much more business-as-usual as to last year, when it was remote to hybrid to kind of any given day, what it could turn into, so. But as far as the overall data, it is pretty similar to most school years coming in at this point.
That's excellent. Is that typically the case across the district?
Yeah, I'll just kind of add on to that. I think one of the things that we saw is that our kids, we were really concerned about their reading, but I will give a lot of credit, I think, to the families of our students, who I think families by and large know how to read with their kids, and kids were doing a lot of reading at home. I do think math is one of those languages that we didn't use it so much, and I think we have a little bit of work to do, and very encouraged with the new program to have a consistent language that comes through. And I think that the kids are really going to be able to respond to that. But I think, just as similar to what Mr. Granfield said, I think, you know, kids are pretty resilient and they're, they're very happy to be back in school and they're really working really hard. I think they understand sort of the, the task that's in front of them. They're excited to be back, but they're working really hard, and, and they are doing very well.
That's awesome. Thank you.
If I could also just add, I think we need to really give a huge shout-out to our instructional staff. And when I say instructional staff, I mean teachers, TAs, interventionists, and that list goes on, for the work they did last year. And no one wanted to go to a hybrid model, but they took it and they just did such an amazing job of it. They maximize every moment of time that they have with kids, either in person or, you know, online. And I think, as you heard Kyle and Katie say, we weren't surprised by the data. Kids that we were concerned with before, we still are concerned with. So that was encouraging, that the work that our staffs did last year really did pay off.
Well, I'm happy that you brought that up. You kind of stole my thunder, because that's kind of where I was going with it, was, you know, it's a true testament to all of you, as well as all the educators in the district, that the fact that you're able to pivot so many times last year, and sometimes on the drop of a dime, right? That you're able to follow through with that consistency to the students to keep their, their learning going, right? Keep the engagement alive there. So I think that's great. You know, I'll, I'll just add, from what I'm hearing, from what I'm seeing, it sounds like it's more along the lines, we're seeing more social-emotional pieces than we are academic pieces. And at least that's just my perspective on, you know, on what I've taken away from this. But no, great presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Amaral?
Yeah, Chris really spoke to some of what I was going to speak to, but, you know, just thank you for being here. It's always exciting to hear all of the good planning and the good work that you're doing. You know, when you talk about just like having children and students feel that, and staff feel that sense of belonging and partnership. I mean, that's just such good stuff. I guess maybe I'll ask, and it might be most applicable to, say, Cushman for our young learners or students with disabilities, and Quinn. I don't know if you've had a lot of families, you know, accessing through their IEP, like compensatory services and that sort of thing. And I'm just wondering how well you're managing with related services, you know, speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy. How's that going?
If I could speak to Cushman, you know, we had our youngest learners the majority of the time, our preschoolers, we had, so they were getting their services. I can just say that I am so happy that we're six weeks into school, because it's just this week, we're like, the routines are being learned, you know? And we're really, all, you know, the students are just making so much success now. It's just like, wow. It took six weeks, though, to really feel like they're comfortable, they're, you know, trusting the environment that they're in, and they're getting their services, and... the environment that they're in, and they're getting their services, and the transition times are lessened so that you have more time for servicing. So right now, we're in a really great place, so.
That's good. Good to hear.
And I think we dealt more with compensatory last year with the constant change of different models and different scenarios, where this year it's much more by being back every single day, there might be little gaps here and there that are much easier to fix than some of the compensatory things we dealt with last year. So it's much better than.
Yeah, that's good. And, and, you know, to your point too, like, you know, not to minimize the social emotional piece, but children are resilient, and I see it in my own home. And I, my philosophy had been, and I've mentioned this before at meetings, and, you know, I have a, a son with some significant needs, and I did see with him in terms of like the time away from school, the time back to school, it was sort of like one step back, two steps ahead. He was just as excited and he just rolled with it. And so I always sort of set the bar, like if he can do it, you know, I can do it. We all can do it, right? But just keep it up. I, I know how dedicated you all are, and you do really great work and you're, you have great teams. So just thank you for being here, and it's nice to see all your faces live and in person.
Mr. News?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. My two colleagues have basically, you know, taken care of everything regarding questions that I had, but I thank you. It's, you know, Mr. Porter was talking about the, the instructional staff and the great job that they're doing, and I thank them for that. But I think it starts with the leadership in the buildings, and it trickles down that way. And the great leadership that we have throughout our district in the buildings is, is very evident as you hear what's, what's going on. Personally, I'm, I'm thrilled to be, you know, walking by this, you know, Cushman School for a walk or something, Cushman, Quinn School, and there's students outside having recess and they're running around, burning up energy, or, you know, the Mellow School, Cushman School, when I drive by, they're all, Potter, they're all out, you know, having a great time, and it's, you know, something that we've been missing the past, you know, year and a half. So it's great for that. And yeah, students, the students are the resilient ones, they'll roll with things, and it's just good to have them back. So I thank you for a nice presentation. I read them all, and they're all fantastic.
And I want to echo what everyone else said too. Great presentation. And I just also want to say, I know I'm relatively new to this role, but I just feel like there's a unique collaboration between all of you, which, you know, I, I just doesn't, you know, I've been in the schools for quite some time. I haven't always felt that between the elementary schools. I just, it seems like you're really feeding off of each other, and it's really, you know, I, I heard Ms. Thomas saying, oh, I like that idea from Mr. Porter. And I think, but again, I think, you know, that speaks to a culture of respect and sharing and sharing of ideas, which only enriches our community as a whole. So I'm so impressed. I think, you know, each of you is such a, you know, I know some of you better than others are such great leaders, you know, you create a warmth and, you know, accessibility in your schools. And, you know, even when you're walking into the classrooms, the way, you know, you said, I'm trying to give really targeted feedback so it's meaningful to the teachers. And I know that because I've seen and I've heard the conversations and I've talked to your staff. So I'm really impressed. And, you know, as much as we talk about the culture, you know, I listened last year, you were all creating such great culture despite the difficulties, you know, meeting kids off the bus, you know, and it just, you know, it was there last year, you know, and now that everyone's back, you know, we haven't left COVID. I mean, that's still a reality that you're dealing with an obstacle. And I guess the one question I did have as I, you know, I know we're trying to, you know, we're, we're dealing specifically with our, I mean, in general, but English and math groups, and those are different groups of students. Can I ask, and I don't know who can speak to this, if you're podding students, how do you do that when you have different students? Because I would imagine that your, your students who are strong in math are not necessarily strong in ELA. Is that presented, has, you know, what are the COVID-type challenges for the actual structuring of your lessons that you're, you know, trying to find solutions for, I guess, is one of my questions?
So I'll just talk a little bit, at least what I've seen in some of our classrooms is our teachers are very creative people, right? So they work really hard on grouping kids, a lot of times by a reading group that they might work together with. But with the new program, they do still work in these work, in these workstations. And they do a great job of using digital formats of that, or having kids play a game, but sitting as far away from each other as you and I because they are able to access that virtually. Or, you know, six feet apart on the floor and have a game in the middle. They're really, they're really creative. The teachers are really, really great. Sure. That. Making sure that our kids are getting what they need when they need it. And, you know, they, they do something for intervention if that's necessary, and that's just, that's just something we have to deal with, right? So if we have, if we have to contact trace that, in some cases, we may end up with additional close contacts because they are, ultimately, our number one goal is still to make sure that kids have what they need and are getting what they need.
And I can just add to that too. The large majority of times that students are being seen in one of those smaller groups, whether in the classroom or with an interventionist, they're able to socially distance because of the small numbers. So it kind of eliminates that where the podding is more, when it's the entire class and larger, you know, special areas, cafeteria, they're identified. So if you ever had a contract, contact trace, but it does most often enable to have the separation in the small groups.
I was not thrilled with it because I thought it was a detour in the road to do the podding, but I will admit, it was a wise and smart decision because if our overall goal is to keep kids in school, then it's working because it really does then limit your close contacts. And as Kyle mentioned, I mean, there's ways with our interventions and stuff that they can, as long as they can be four feet apart from students, then they, they won't be of close contact. So we're certainly being creative in that regard, but also we just at Potter, we took advantage of the Columbus State long weekend, and some of our teachers were able to change pods a little bit. It was challenging because we literally on Tuesday morning, the 12th, I mean, we had to immediately identify if a child was out, why are they out? And if they're home because they're in Mexico, then that's good. If they're home with, you know, runny nose and sore throat, then that's a problem. And we had maybe about the half of our teachers that wanted to switch were able to. So we just said, we can't identify, we can't find these kids, rather than take that chance. So again, the fact that kids are staying in school, that's incredible, really is. And I think it goes to the work of Justin Stae, if everything else is done, it's working.
Well, thank you. And again, I think it also goes to the incredible creativity of you and your staff. I mean, again, once again, we're hearing creativity, flexibility, you know, because again, it's not over and it's been hard. And, you know, I hope every day you guys pat yourselves on the shoulders and, you know, your staff as well. So thank you for, again, a great presentation. I wish you the very best year.
Madam Chair? If I might? If I just want to add a couple of things, you mentioned a couple of things I wanted to add to. I think this team of folks works well together because first of all, they're good human beings, and they're nice people.
That's always important.
It's important. They're nice people. And, you know, we work really hard. I, I remember when I interviewed for this position many years ago now, it seems, seventh year now, but when I visited the district, at some of the elementary meetings I met with teachers, some of the questions were, how are you going to help us get the curriculum standard across the district for the elementary level? So that, that was important. So they were yearning for that as well. So it took a lot of work with, as you know, we've had the L3 teams over the years, we've had the CIA teams, we now have an instructional tech kind of team coming together to help the person that we, Trish Leary, that we put in at district level. So those teachers that stepped up to create units of study, provide PD to their colleagues, and, and use the PLC time and whatever it was to ensure that folks were on the same page for, as I said, the units of study and whatnot. We use the Lucy Cockens model of instruction, which everybody was, is on board with that. It took a number of years to get folks all through that training so that, so to have the same curriculum and, and all of that across elementary level is, is a hard task. And, you know, the teachers, and as they can all attest to, really stepped up. And now we're working on the Bridges, the math program. And, you know, we called for early adopters, and I think, as we said, and we had all but two people step up and say they, and maybe they have come across now, but, and the Bridges program is going to be a very wonderful program for the math complex. It's going to take some PD for folks to really dig into it, but I think in the end we'll have some good results. So I just wanted to add, add that to that.
Thank you, certainly.
Yep.
Press the board. Well, thank you very much again.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we need a motion to approve these reports.
Oh, yes. Can I have a motion to approve these reports?
So moved.
Okay. Can I have a second?
There you go.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Oliver, a second by Ms. Ammaral. Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Excuse me?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Aye. Okay. Opposed? All right, motion passes four to one, four to zero. Excuse me. All right, now we will be looking at new business. Okay, so first on our agenda for new business is to vote on the new membership of the South Coast Educational Collaborative. And does that go to Dr. Gifford?
Yeah. So as you've received information, the South Coast Collaborative is looking to add Fall River to the membership, and I know you have received the map of the number of the districts that are in. I hope you did. Mr. News is giving me a funny little attachment.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay, well, you should have, but anyway, it was only just showing the various districts that are involved, Somerset, Swansea, I've got a pile of papers here myself. And so it's been the last year or so, Fall River had first asked to join the collaborative, and then, you know, the superintendent changed, et cetera, as we all know in Fall River. So with the new superintendent, they have put in another request to join. And we had our board meeting, I don't have the exact date here, but maybe three weeks ago or so, and that was a discussion about it, and folks were obviously supportive of it, saying, you know, the diversity, the suburban, the rural, everybody urban coming together, felt that that was a good move to have Fall River join as a member as well. As you know, we went through the process ourselves, and each school committee that is a member has to vote approval, it goes to DESI, it takes a year or so, I guess, which we did. And so that's it. So if you were to approve that, there is a vote that I just had in front of me before I was looking for the map. Hopefully you got that. Okay. The motion that you would have to make, vote for member school committee.
Do I have any discussion? I don't know if I have any. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Gifford, did you have any follow-up in that email that I had sent you in regards to?
Oh, yes, I did.
I had asked Dr. Gifford for the committee, just to, if she could update us. It doesn't even have to be tonight, you may be at the next meeting, just on if, in what South Coast Collaborative has contributed since we joined OPEB.
Exactly, I do have that.
As well as their debt obligations and debt liabilities. I'm just, as you know, I'm a member of the SMEC Board of Directors, and I know that, you know, just following through and following up and hearing about collaborators that have closed in the past, I have no doubt that, I always hear positive things about South Coast Collaborative, but I just think it's important that the committee was updated on it.
Yeah. So I did call Mr. Heimbecker and just ask him that question because there hasn't been a lot of discussion at our couple of board meetings that we've had since June. I guess we had June and then we had September. But what I can tell you from the minutes from the last meeting, one thing he told me was that, you know, the trust has been written in such a way that we're not responsible or for the trust itself. Right now, and then I'll follow up with a little bit.
Sure.
Right now, there's only $62,000 in the fund. He said the number of retirees that there, that they have are usually funded through the regular operational budget because there are so few. But it's a $9.9 million liability actuary that, if you will, yeah.
Mr. News has a question.
This is in the minutes from June.
Okay.
Is that an OPEB?
Yes, yes. We're talking OPEB. We're talking OPEB. And the last thing that I know, and I can probably report back a little bit more, that the trustees are supposed to meet in December. There's an audit coming, and once that audit is done, they will make more recommendations to the collaborative. Right now, the collaborative has only contributed like $50,000, and there is none in the 2022 budget because they collaborate, contribute out of their surplus. And we have a new vice president now who will be on that, the trustees, and he'll be able to report back to our next meeting, which will be coming up soon. So I'll bring more information. That's all I've had at this point in time.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's just a little concerning, the $50,000, that it sounds like that was just their initial contribution.
Right.
So I would just ask that, as you, as the Dartmouth representative, that you bring that back to, to the board at the South Coast Collaborative and let them know that they've, in my, at least in just my opinion, that, that's unacceptable, and we need to do a little bit better with that.
Yeah.
It concerns me as well as, I'd just like a follow-up as well on the debt, on any kind of debt liabilities.
Okay.
Outside of OPEB.
I'll get that information. We should have, have a meeting coming up a couple of weeks.
No problem.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gifford.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ammaral?
No, I didn't have any comments.
Mr. News?
No, what I'm going to, Madam Chair, is I, I'm going to abstain on this, only because, you know, Mr. Oliver is our representative to SMEC, Southeast and Mass Educational Collaborative, but I'm the treasurer for SMEC, so I'm going to just abstain and not have any.
Okay. So would that mean that we wouldn't necessarily have two abstentions then?
No.
All right.
Yeah, there's no, I'll actually, I'll make the motion, I move that the Fall River Public Schools.
Okay.
Join the South Coast Educational Collaborative as a member with full benefits, privileges, and responsibilities, and subject to the terms and conditions of the collaborative agreement. Approval by the Department of Education is subject to applicable Commonwealth rules and regulations. I further move that the chairman, or the chairwoman of the school committee is authorized on behalf of the committee to execute all appropriate documentation to consummate the committee's decision. I further acknowledge that the superintendent of schools will serve as the district's representative of the collaborative board of directors.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, the motion passes three to, three to zero plus an abstention.
Three, zero, one.
Three, zero, one. Thank you. I'll get it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to the superintendent's update.
Okay, and I'm shoveling of papers here.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things. I know at our last meet, well, our meeting with Dorothy Presser, who asked me about a timeline, so I'll plan on putting that information on the agenda for next meeting. I also wondered, we talked about a subcommittee that would meet with me and talk about goals, the SMART goals. So we checked, we, I, I thought for sure we had a subcommittee listed on our list of subcommittees, but Kathleen and Mr. News, Ms. Ammaral met with me last time. So I don't know if you want to leave it that way, because there was no committee listed. It was just what we did, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's the committee's pleasure.
I'm good with that, you know.
Okay.
Doesn't matter to me.
All right. You're like, good, one last thing. So I will plan on having a meeting with them, we'll talk about it, but I'll also, for the next meeting, we'll at least have the timeline of what we're thinking, how to go ahead through the process for the year. So that. Also, as you recall, we did have a request last year about naming of the field house. Now that we have our policy in place, I would like to begin a process formulating a committee, Now that we have our policy in place, I would like to begin a process formulating a committee, et cetera, and see what kind of process, because we have had a community person's request to name. So, with our process, we would then come up with putting it out to the rest of the community, that this has come up, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'll try to start to develop something. I just wanted to put on your radar that now that we have that policy in place, we can move on either doing it or not doing it, whatever we choose to do.
Sure. Are we, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Are we looking, are you looking at forming a subcommittee with a couple of members of the school committee?
Yes, yes.
And then other employees?
I'll have like a suggestion, and we do have a little bit of past practice, or at least some help, right, for us? And I know Mr. Nunes, being the historian, has a good sense of what we did. But there were, I think there were a couple of community members on it, and folks from the school committee, maybe some staff members, et cetera. So, I'll look at that and then bring a suggestion, and we can decide what we want to do and go forward from there. And then, the only other thing I have on my list right now is, of course, you all got the award recognition for Mr. Nunes. So, we're obviously very proud of him. And I don't know if Mr. Oliver, if you want to speak to this a little bit?
Sure. So, for...
And then, just let me, then we're going to organize a date where mask will come down and award it officially. But I want to get some dates from Mr. Nunes and all of that. But if we just give it a quick overview tonight, that'd be great.
Yeah. So, thank you, Dr. Gifford, and congratulations, Mr. Nunes. I know he is very humble, and he does not like any kind of attention like this. Is he shaking his head? So, yeah, for some of the committee members, I reached out and had a conversation with Dr. Gifford, as well as Dr. Jenkins, and I nominated Mr. Nunes for, on behalf of the Dartmouth School Committee and the Dartmouth Public Schools, for his 31 years of service to the Dartmouth Public Schools, the students and children of Dartmouth, and just the community as a whole. And the award recognizes a lifetime of achievements in public service through the committee, as well as they look at many of the, how, besides the school committee role, how does the individual help out in the community and volunteer? And, you know, it was very easy to list any number of activities that Mr. Nunes volunteers for. So, I guess at their last Board of Directors meeting, they put it to a vote, and they also agreed that Mr. Nunes is deserving of the sauna. So, congratulations, Sean.
Thank you.
So, we will have, they'll be coming down, but we need some dates from you, if you can provide me with the next couple of whatever.
Yeah, we're going to, I'm assuming we're going to do it at a school committee meeting. That's fine, yeah.
So, would they all be kind of open?
Yeah, that's fine, because my, yeah.
All right. All right, we'll take care of it.
No, that's, no, that's fine. I'll get you, let me check out the...
Check those dates with your family.
With, because I do have, in all seriousness, my family does want to be here.
Right, of course. Okay. Well, congratulations. All right.
Thank you very much. Chris says I'm very humble. I don't do it for this, but believe me.
We know.
The T-shirt I have says, and talking with Mr. Cristofoli earlier tonight, you know, it's for the kids, and that's what it's all about. So, thank you.
Wonderful.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gifford, and I'm stepping into this role tonight for Dr. Jenkins. But I do want to just step back and say, I can't imagine anyone more deserving of this, you know. I mean, really, from, you know, meeting the kids at prom to, you know, emceeing the band home shows, it's, you know, thank you.
Yep.
So, okay, on that end, I know that we have, I'm sorry. Yes.
I just wanted to add, sorry. I hate, I'm feeling, the glow is coming, the heat is coming off you right now. I can tell you, not really. You're enjoying it, but not really. But I just wanted to share that Friday night with a game, my husband usually takes Liam. And if they're late, or if Liam's a little bit too excited, they'll watch from the fence on the side. And because we're just a chaotic family, we're a little late, and so, we watch from YouTube, from the DC, the community, yeah.
YouTube channel, yeah.
And I happen to not really even look at my stuff, you know, I didn't even notice this at the time. And I did say to my husband, who's watching with Liam right now, I'm sure, that we heard your voice, because I was trying to figure out who was in the, who was speaking, and he said, no, John doesn't do this, he does that, because he knows he's lived in this town all of his life, my husband. And so, and I just happened to say, I wasn't talking about you, but I was talking about you. And I honestly just happened to say, you know, John's been doing this for so long, 31 years, I didn't say that, but I'll say that now. And, but I say, you know, he really just, you know, like it or lump it, agree or disagree. John, you just do your due diligence, you're in every building, you set like a level of what someone in this position, in this role, you know, should do. And I certainly, I'll never make it to that level, even if I wanted to. But I honestly had that conversation with my husband about how you just love what you do, and it's all for the kids. So, I just wanted to share that. I was talking about you on Friday night, in a good way.
That's it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Amaral. So, again, as I was about to say, Dr. Jenkins is not as ill this evening. I know that we have pledged to revisit physical access to the school committee meetings, as well as student representative sitation on a separate note to the committee. I think if we take a look at the first question, you know, last we spoke, we had determined that as we were kind of inviting outside events, but we weren't quite comfortable having public attend inside of, you know, events that are indoors. But I'd like to turn over the discussion. I do want to, we feel more comfortable having this full decision with Dr. Jenkins here. But if there is any more conversation right now, Mr. Oliver, if you would like to weigh in?
No, I just think that, you know, depending on how our numbers are trending, I believe last time, the past week, were they trending down in Dartmouth, or would they stagger with a... They went up a little bit. They went up a little bit. They're still very low, nowhere near where they were last year. Yeah, you know, I think, like I said before, I'll say it again, I think at some point, we need to open this up to the public. You know, when that time is, I would like to say sooner rather than later. But I do agree at this point, you know, let's continue waiting, at least till Dr. Jenkins gets back.
Ms. Amaral?
I would agree with Chris, you know, I'm, you know, I would love to see folks kind of here. I mean, historically, we don't really get a large crowd. But I would love to see it. And so, yeah, obviously, waiting for Dr. Jenkins to be here as well. And then also the numbers and, you know. But folks, please just keep emailing us when you have concerns or public comment, because they are forwarded to us immediately, and, you know, we read them. So, I know that sort of probably doesn't feel, feel validating to some, although I haven't really received many comments at all lately. But, but yeah, I sort of concur with...
Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, no, I kind of agree. I mean, we had talked about at least November 1st, which is when the commissioner has extended the mask update to. I would assume sometime towards the tail end of this week, the beginning of next week, he's going to have an announcement on that type of deal. So, I mean, you know, again, we can revisit it on November 1st, which is when the date is supposed to happen, and see what goes on from there. Yeah, would I like to see people back here? Yeah. And maybe we're going to have to figure out if we do decide to let people back in, and they're still masked, and figure out how many we can put in here and have that type of a discussion. Because, yeah, I'm afraid I'm going to disagree with my esteemed colleague here, Ms. Amaral, because somewhere down the line, I think if we're still wearing masks, they will be lined out the door while we need to get in, type of deal.
You have a, no, true.
But I do think that we need to wait till November 1st anyway, see what the commissioner says, and then have some type of a formative discussion at that point in time, as to where we want to go. And, you know, if we want to open it up, and how we're going to do it, and things of that nature. Because there's, I mean, there's a lot of things coming up in the schools, you know, at this point in time, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nunes. I have to say, I, you know, agree, you know, we're bringing, other persons are coming in for games and, you know, different events. So, I think, you know, let's hold this conversation until November 1st. You know, let's talk about it then with Dr. Jenkins in residence and see where we are at that point. All right. And then, the other item that was on her agenda was to talk about student representation to the school committee. Dr. Gifford, did you have any thoughts on this? I know she had, Dr. Jenkins had, you know, brought up the fact that we want to be, to be in compliance. We really want to expand and have a regular representative, not just, you know, reporting, but a non-voting representative at our meetings.
I just think we need to reach out to the high school. I'm just a little concerned with, well, although, you never know these kiddos. They, because you have to have a committee. It's a different kind of committee that the, and I'm not sure if it's the whole school committee meets with the committee on another night, and then the rep comes from that committee. It talks about two different things, that the, there's a school committee, subcommittee, student committee kind of thing. So, I think we need to look into it a little more, but if the kids are willing, I guess, you know.
Need to get more details.
Yeah, yeah. We'll get a little more details, but, yeah.
And I got the impression that Dr. Jenkins had looked into this, you know, with much more, you know, depth.
Right.
So, she can, you know, fill us in more next week as well. All right. Okay, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to add? Mr. Oliver?
I would just like to ask, and then maybe see this as an agenda item for the next school committee meeting, that I know that Governor Baker declined to do a vaccination requirement for Massachusetts educators, right? I believe he decided to do that. I know that the MTA was in support of a mandate across the state put out by the governor. Have any districts, because I know that I was, I was reading earlier that Cambridge mandated, the largest school district, to mandate vaccinations for students. I wasn't sure on staff, but I'm just wondering, what is the, what is the authority that the school committee has for a vaccine mandate for its staff? And I maybe that's, we can put that on for the next meeting's agenda. I'd just like to have that conversation.
Yeah. My first instinct is to say, we wouldn't have the authority. I think just conversation with Mr. Mishu, whatever, it's like the DPH has that authority more. But then you get into the policy piece, and I think it would also be a negotiated item. Because I'm thinking, I know Lexington, I remember early on in the year, newsletter that came from the Lexington superintendent and to the parents, et cetera, it was early on, and it did say staff members were being required to be vaccinated. In my thinking, it was, oh, my goodness, and this was early. I'm thinking, they obviously must have negotiated that. And so, I think there's a lot of pieces that we'd have to look into.
I know there's a lot of moving parts.
Right, right.
I just, it just concerns me, continues to concern me, that we have, continue to have not only positive students, but positive staff members.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if...
Look into it.
I would just like to have that, have that conversation a little bit deeper.
Sure.
Ms. Amaral? Mr. Nunes, I do have one other question.
Yeah, that's fine. Couple of things. Have we heard anything from Great Inbeford Volk on their minutes? I know Dr. Jenkins was following up on that. I'm just, I had made my notes before I realized she wasn't going to be here tonight, which is no biggie. But just to keep it on the, on the burner, try to move it to the front burner, as they say. Also, too, and I know Josh talked about it a little bit, but we are having, the high school band is having another home show, Nesba Home Show this coming Saturday, and it starts at 2:00. We have 21 bands coming, anywhere from New Befford and Somerset, all the way to Wakefield, Andover, Burlington, Redding, Woburn, Billerica. So, there's going to be quite a bit there. Gates will open at 1:00. It's going to be $10 for adults and $8 for students and senior citizens. We have two sets of awards. The first one is scheduled with the festival, and Division 1 and 2, Divisions 1 and 2 is scheduled for approximately 4:20. And then, the second one for Divisions 3, 4, and 5, scheduled for approximately 7:40, which is right after Dartmouth, because Dartmouth is scheduled to go on at approximately 7:25. So, it's a great way to see a lot of good bands and a lot of great entertainment and support the students throughout. And, you know, talking about that, I mean, you know, our football team, all our fall sports teams are doing absolutely wonderful, and hopefully, they can keep it up. I know our volleyball is playing the top team in the state right now as we're meeting. So, hopefully, the success will continue. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nunes. Just one, you know, one thought as we look at our next meeting on November 1st, and this kind of dovetails a bit with what Mr. Oliver brought up. Do we anticipate that we're going to be revisiting the mask, you know, considering that, you know, Governor Baker, you know, is, they're making some decisions about that right now? Is that an anticipated topic for our next agenda? The mask mandate that we have here, I guess, Dr. Gifford?
I think you'll, I think we'll have an update very shortly from the commissioner.
Right.
I mean, I think that dovetails with what I said about what the commissioner is going to say.
Right.
Okay, you know.
So, then if we end up having that conversation and we're, you know, forced to make any decision, can we have Mr. Mishu come in to weigh in? I think it would just be helpful for us to have. You don't think so, Mr. Nunes?
That's a personal opinion, no.
No, I just, I think it would be helpful if we're making a decision, just to have some, you know, thoughts from the leader of the Board of Health in Dartmouth. I mean, that's where I'm coming from. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I would be okay if you, you know, if you want, if you want him to come in, that's fine, if he's available. If not, if you could just reach out to him just to get his, you know, as far as his thoughts on that.
For sure.
Okay.
Might be something we have no choice in.
Well, that's right. I mean, it might be a moot point.
Yeah, sometimes that's easier.
But if it is, well, no, but if it is a decision where we have to make a decision, it would be great to have, you know...
His input.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, if it becomes, if it goes back to becoming a local option.
That's what I mean. That's what I mean.
If it comes back to becoming a local option, then it's something we have to discuss and such. So, but if the powers that be just sit there and we're done.
That's right. All right. Okay. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. Can I?
Next meeting?
Oh, our next meeting, thank you, is scheduled for November 1st, Monday, November 1st?
Voltsing today.
At 6:30? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And at this point, I'd like to recess into, wait.
Oh, I got it. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of pending litigation and not return to open session.
Okay. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Okay.
I'm sorry, second.
See, I'm messing you up now, too. All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Oh, and did I need to go back and revisit with Ms. Gunther? I'm sorry, Ms. Gunther, do we have any additional public comment this evening?
There is one here. I'll forward to you.
Okay, thank you.
You follow, okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. May I have a roll call vote? Mr. Oliver?
No.
Oh, no, sorry.
Mary Waite?
Yeah, here, yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you and good night.
Okay, thank you and good night.
Good job.